Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our most kindly gracious heavenly father, we just thank you for the privilege of being here tonight. We just thank you as we do the business of this city that everything will be done in an orderly fashion and we will get something accomplished tonight. We just ask you now to lead us, guide us, and direct us in everything that we say and do and everything that the audience says and does. In your name we pray, amen.
First of all, I just want to say I'm grateful to have this position. I appreciate the board for giving me this opportunity to do this job. I plan on protecting and serving the community like I'm supposed to do. Another thing I'd like to add is there is a Tennessee law, thirty-nine seventeen three oh six, disrupting meetings or processions. A person commits an offense if, with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting, procession, or gathering, the person substantially obstructs or interferes with the meeting, procession, or gathering by fiscal action or verbal utterance. A violation of this section is a class A misdemeanor. That, that is criminal, right? The mayor is gonna conduct this meeting. I have nothing to do with that. They have their rules. It's my job to make sure that we're doing everything lawful and to maintain order. If we disrupt the meeting, I'm gonna ask you to leave the first time. If you don't leave, you are gonna go to jail. Plain and simple. If you do have business or you have a question, I think, and I may be wrong, but I think they're allowed three minutes?
Yeah, sometimes it'll be long.
At the end of the meeting, you can ask questions, or you can get on the agenda if you have any concerns or questions. Don't ask me questions right now. We're gonna proceed with business. If you have any questions at the end of it, feel free to talk to me. I'm standing right outside to answer any questions we have, but we're gonna conduct business and we're not gonna interrupt.
We're gonna have some comments after the bills be paid.
By who?
But we're gonna have comments there instead of going to the end of the meeting. That's the way, that's the way they do it in the county commission.
And that's their opportunity to ask questions, but we also, that's fine, and that's the rules. I didn't know, but that's when we're gonna be orderly. We're gonna be courteous. My mother-in-law, she teaches Bible school, and it's funny, she preached James two, chapter eight, and it's basically what our parents taught us when we were young, the golden rule, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Let's treat each other like that. That's all I ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, approve the minutes?
Much in to approve.
Roll call?
Dennis?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve the financial report?
Now, on the financial report, now this is up to date with the end of the year and everything?
Yes. I'll explain that process real briefly. We were held up due to the comptroller's investigation. I came into work on Saturday and started trying to, I went to the bank and got copies of some of the bank statements. Came in on Saturday and tried to start balancing and couldn't. Nothing was coming out, nothing was balanced, and nothing was matching. So I made a phone call and found that because they would not let us close the year, we could not balance because when you close the year, you do your adjusting entries, it updates everything. So I stopped right there. I was here about an hour. I stopped and went home. I come in Monday. I called and spoke to Kathy at ATA, our auditors. She gave me the go-ahead. She sent me the year-end entries that need to be made, gave me the go-ahead to close out the year. By the time I got that done, it was Tuesday afternoon. I got the rest of the bank statements in yesterday afternoon. So in thirty-six hours' time, we were able to balance the city, and I owe all of that to Jackie. I did not have to make one correction to any of her work for the whole month of July. And I just wanna commend her. I wish she was here, but she's doing an excellent job. I get comments all the time on her personality and demeanor and the way that she deals with people and the way that she answers the phone. You can hear the smile on her face when she answers the phone. She's a pleasure to work with, and it made doing this such a much easier process to have somebody in there that understands the accounting rules and is able to do the work without supervision and no corrections to be made. So we are balanced. The year is closed out. July is balanced, and we're ready to move forward with August.
All right, good.
On that note, I had one other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, and then I'm done for anything, but we had talked one time before, before I took over as the reporter, about possibly getting a credit card machine for general fund because right now we can only take water bill payments. And I have spoken to Cadence Bank, and by the end of the month, we should have a credit card machine in City Hall for general fund. In that regard, what we're looking at and what we've kinda talked about is possibly having one of us at court because we've had people wanna pay their tickets right then, and they can't because there's nobody to take the payment, so we've talked about us rotating out when they have court where we can take payments and then we'll have a better understanding of what the tickets are, what needs to be done, and what needs to be paid. But the question I had for y'all, and I feel like we need to purchase it, to purchase the credit card machine, it would be seven hundred and forty dollars. To rent is thirty-five dollars a month. So if we pay the seven forty upfront, that cost is done. There will be no set fees. The only fees that we would be out is two point six percent for each transaction plus ten cents, and that's based on less than fifty thousand dollars a year in volume, which I don't see us doing that much on that machine, but it would be able to use for anything that feeds into general fund.
That is a no-brainer. I've dealt with credit cards for thirty years or something. You own your own machine?
Yeah, three percent.
You don't, you don't rent it? You never own it?
We charge three dollars on water bills, but with it being, what, property taxes and things like that, we would have to charge three percent because if your taxes are six hundred dollars, they're gonna charge us eighteen dollars. So we would have to charge a three percent fee to cover that cost.
You always do that, but I mean, if you own your own, whatever the issue is, you can always move. You can move. With owning your own machine, you can move. It don't have to stay with that one agency.
But this is kind of a goal of mine to have this done before property taxes come back into play because we missed so many opportunities last fall of being able to take credit cards for property taxes, and I feel like it would help our collection some and get things in on a timely manner.
What about next gen? You get that with next gen. You don't have to have a next.
You don't have to have a next.
Next gen will be after the first of the year. Now that I've got somebody that is comfortable in her job, that's something we can start working towards. But with property tax season gearing up, we're not gonna do it. I'm gonna wait till, I wanna wait till after first of the year, and then we'll get that rolling.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call?
Dennis?
Yes.
Brenda? Yes. Dennis?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right, now, before we go into new business, business filter wants to approach.
We gotta vote on the financial reports that we, you brought that up.
Did you get a motion?
I like a motion to accept the financial report.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call?
Brenda?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
All right, we gotta approve the bills be paid.
I do have one, I do have one addendum. I didn't get the, with this being the early board meeting, I did not get TG Holdings' bill till today. I got their statement in, and I was able to balance it today, and it is seven fifty-three eighty-six, and a portion of that is water. I think it's all water. It's all water. Seven fifty-three eighty-six, which we go on the water account to pay for the fuel. The TG Holdings, Pat's.
Yes, Pat's.
I did talk to Donnie the other day. We are fixing to go back to Care Petroleum. None of the newer guys have got fuel cards, so they've been getting their gas at TG's, and I wasn't aware of that. We do get a better rate at Care Petroleum, so I've got that on my list to do next week to call Care Petroleum and make sure everybody has a fuel card.
Nothing out of white on it.
Nothing, nothing out of white. I knew we paid it down.
Second?
I'll second, okay.
Roll call?
Dennis?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Frankie?
Yes.
On the, just because it's in this part of the packet, your time sheets, y'all's time sheets and stuff, does that turn over when we read in the budget? Or does it, does it reset when you hit your year mark of being here?
The way that I was told, and this is actually a question that came up this week with the auditor, when I started, you get your first year vacation on your anniversary date, and then on July the first, everybody that's been here at least a year gets their vacation for the following year.
It's already, so it, it reflects that?
This is what everybody's new vacation hours that were just loaded on July the first. Now, there are some questions on that. We may have to look at that policy based on what the auditors have told me and some of the investigating that they've done, the way that we've been paying vacations out when people leave. I'm not gonna go into that tonight till I know for sure what it is that we need to do, but she's stating that we are kinda not doing what they recommend on vacations, but the way that it stands right now, you get your first vacation week, the week that you, the day you were here a year, and then July the first, everybody's vacation and your personal day hits your account for the year.
Okay, now, I wanna, Dennis, you wanna speak about the dog problem?
I do.
Yes, if you're open to speak.
I would like for you all to see this too. I know the dog problem is not something new in this town. I know it's been talked about before. This morning, it was very unfortunate as my wife went out for a run, and she was down on Lake Street. The small dog came up and startled her. The dog did not, not bite her, but as she was startled and turned around, she tripped and fell and broke her arm. It's been set, probably be okay. But I'm upset that we have a leash law in this town that I know, I'm not, I'm not speaking to anybody, that is not enforced strongly enough. I love dogs. I don't love irresponsible dog owners near as much. She was on a public street, and this dog startled her. I assume seven o'clock in the morning, I assume somebody came to their front door and let the dogs out to run. Put 'em in your freaking backyard. Put 'em on a leash. Do something. She's had other issues with dogs, but they'll bark a ways away, and she'll go a different direction, which she shouldn't have to do, but she does that. I bought her some mace. This one didn't get close enough, or somebody'd be complaining about a blind dog for about four hours, which would be fine with me. I'm not gonna go out and do a vigilante. I'd like to, but I'm not gonna do that. I don't know what the answer is. I would ask our officers if they can chase them down a little bit more, try to. I don't know what you can do. I don't have a picture of the dog. It was a small brown dog. They run through my backyard three or four times a week. I can't, they're not aggressive. They're not hurting me. But those are two, the two big brindle dogs that everybody's seen in this town running around because they're everywhere. So all I'm saying is, please do something. The other thing, I'd like to give a shout out to Jason because he saw her struggling and picked her up and brought her home. That is serve and protect, and I appreciate that.
Yes.
And he wanted me to, he wanted to call the aid car for me, but we made it on our own, but she may have to go back in and have it reset and pinned and have surgery. I don't feel like that's my responsibility to do, even though my insurance covers most of it. It shouldn't happen because people should be responsible, and if we've gotta double the fines, triple the fines, quadruple the fines, I don't, I'm just, I don't have the answer, but I do have a lot of questions, so thank you much for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate you.
You don't know who holds the dog?
I do not. I, I.
Because I know our procedures right now, if there's a dog bothering somebody, they're supposed to call in here to City Hall or they call the police, and then Jessica is then called out to go get the dog.
She explained to Jason where she thought it came from, but it snuck up on her. She doesn't carry her phone when she runs. She didn't take a picture of it. I mean, and it happens really quickly.
Is it just brown or black and brown?
I don't know. She said she thought she could identify it if she saw it, but it happened so quick.
Yeah, it's up to my radar now.
But the thing is, too.
It was on Lake Street, about a block and a half from the highway. It was, it was about a block before our dog catcher's house, right in that, it was in her neighborhood. Again, I'm not.
I know she's trying very hard. I mean, there's been a lot of dogs that.
I talked to her before the meeting. I'm not directing anything at her.
Renee, is your dog?
I don't know.
She's trying, trying for it, and I agree with you on that.
Yeah, mine exists.
But the maximum fine we have as a municipality is fifty dollars. I mean, that's ridiculous.
Okay.
Now, what we, what we might have to do, and we talked to Drew Cook about this before, as well as Danny Gooden, they've got more powers through general sessions, and that might be what we have to do, is that we handle it one time here, and then the second time, instead of sitting here, send it up to general sessions.
I believe we all know that the lessons we learn in life, that we learn for the longest, are the ones that cost us. Money or something else. They cost us dearly, and if people won't take care of their pets.
I feel the same way. I mean, I'm sorry this happened to your wife. I wish it hadn't have happened, but I know we are trying very hard because I work with Jessica a lot on this, and we try very, very hard to keep them off the streets.
I'm just asking you to keep doing that and doing more if you can.
I think it should be the owner's.
Responsibility.
Absolutely.
But we have to find out who the owners.
Nobody's gonna immediately.
Another thing too is, is a lot of people, they say they don't, me, I'll say me, I wanna walk because even though they're gentle or whatever, who knows? They may not look the way I like, the way I look, or smell or something, and you know, I would walk because most of them are pets and.
Well, we have, Mr. Dennis, we have, we do have a leash law in this town, and we have vicious dog ordinance.
I understand that. I read it today.
We need, it needs to be enforced. It's what it needs to be.
I agree with you. That's what I'm asking.
And I think we really need to start pushing hard to enforce the leash law. We have cited these people in the court, cited them in court every week. You know, if they don't wanna take care of the dog, we bring them in every week. That's their fine. That's the way I feel about it.
Thank you.
But a lot of people, you know, there's a lot of people in this town, they'll get a dog, then they just own it, then they just put it out to the public.
That's the bad part.
And that's the bad part of it.
They run through my yard?
Most people, most good people that's got dogs try to be responsible for them, but you got people that just want the dog for a little while, then they don't approve it anymore. They just runs the budget.
They want it as a puppy, but once it becomes a raw dog, they don't want it.
It's hard to deal with.
All right, let's move on. New business, Donny Simmons with the water meter replacement, calibration of the meter. Donny, you wanna speak?
Yes, yes, sir, love. We're needing, we're needing to buy more meters now because we got, you know, I'll put a list in front of y'all. Those meters that we're having to estimate every month because we can't come up with the right, the meters are old. The numbers on them are getting over a million gallons, but instead of buying the old style meters, I'd rather buy the newer style that we can eventually turn into automatic rate meters. We won't be, we'll still have to rate them manually until we get on down the road, but at least we'll be putting in new meters that eventually we can use as automatic rate meters. I just hope to keep buying the old meters that when, when we do get new meters, them won't be worth nothing. They'll just be junk. So I'd like to start buying the newer meters. I think they're two hundred and fifty dollars a piece, and I think the regular meters are around two hundred, so it's not a huge difference.
Pay the fifty dollars, and then we can keep using it.
And maybe just get like a dozen of them at a time or something until, you know, until, till we can get more.
Didn't you say, didn't you say utility service company would help you find funding?
They're working on that now. They're working on trying to get to where we can get all of the whole town done at one time and have a contract. They're gonna bring y'all a presentation before long and try to make it to where we can get them all new, have everything automatic read, and the city pay it out over ten, fifteen, twenty years, you know, just like pay so much a year for, and they'll completely take care of them. It'll be just like our water tanks. They completely take care of them, and they keep them perfect all the time, so it'd be a great thing.
Another thing, Donny, the plant meters, did you?
Yeah, oh, I've got, I brought a quote for, a yearly quote for getting the meters at the plant calibrated.
Thirty-seven hundred and six?
Yes, sir, and that's something the state wants us to do. You know, we had it done this year because the state wanted it done, but they want us to do this every year. We have to calibrate the meters at the plant. All went on when we're running tests. We have to calibrate them, but they don't want our calibration. They want a company to come in here and calibrate, and this is what they're asking for. But if we do this, anything that happens to them will be paid for. That pays for everything. It's almost four thousand dollars a year, but if anything tears up, they come fix it.
That's not already in place?
No, we don't have this yet. No.
That needs to, that needs to go ahead and be.
We just bought all, all our meters now are new. We just got this year, most of them, and it'd be great to have this too.
Proper, Donny was talking about, a program that I talked to him about, trying to boost that they had set up at the TLM conference that I talked to, and it was ironic. It's the same group that does our water tank. And I spent, I spent a couple hours talking to him. They told me that they didn't sell the meter that it was, actually, we could go with whoever we wanted to with the meter, but the system itself, they would come in and implement it. And he said, the good thing on it, that, he said, we left some information down there, and he said he left it with Jackie. So I don't, I don't know.
I talked to, I talked to him today.
We've talked to him before.
Yeah, I talked to him today.
He's wanting to come back and do a presentation before the whole thing, and he said, what we've got is when we implement the system, he said, we've also got funded. We can set it up on ten years, fifteen years, or we can even stretch it to twenty to fit you need. He said, now, but all you gotta do is just figure out what kind of meter if you want.
That's it. They put them in.
I asked him to come back and let us get a date set up, and like I say, come in and actually address the board, and he's got a presentation and he wants yours. Since you mentioned that conference, Frankie, we never had a chance to recognize you for taking the time out to go through this. You spent three days up there trying to learn something about it. I said five days.
Five days.
Well, we appreciate that. As a taxpayer, I certainly appreciate you going to try and find out something about what we can do for the little small town. Another thing I wanted to let, since we're on that about the TLM, one thing as far as the employees are concerned. Any employee that would like to seek a higher education, and we're talking about going on to college. Continue to work here, and you can do this online, and it's paid for through this program that they've got. All we gotta do is get back for them and get you set up, but any college course you wanna take, they will, they will pay for you to continue an education. I thought that was a great program. It is. Certainly is. And we had, there's several other things too. I just had, I left a lot of it with Beth, and I've got to tell you, Donny, I put a lot of it in your basket.
Okay, yeah, I had shit to do.
There was, there were ten or fifteen different booths set up on nothing but preparation and playground equipment, and there was funding there available to, matter of fact, I talked to the Blue Cross Blue Shield group that just gave the city a tip bill that grants to put the splash park in up there. They told me there were still monies available, even though we had submitted for it and was turned down on the original request. She said, don't, don't stop there. Resubmit because we still got money, and we would love to build a splash park there in Ridgefield as well. So that was a lot of good, a lot of good things that we saw.
I had a lot of questions about the splash park. I have lots of questions about that.
Well, on the meters, what you're requesting is you're wanting to buy the new meters?
Yes.
The ones that are, that can be read by the computer?
Like maybe a dozen of them at a time or something until, till we can, I mean, you gotta buy a, you gotta buy a whole system to make it work, but if we start buying the meters and start putting them in as we need to, that'll be that many that we don't have to.
That'll do later, yeah.
You're doing a six hundred dollar increase of that money. That's a no-brainer. That money, Beth, is it already in his budget?
He's got money in his budget for meters and things like that. Now, having said that, of course, our new budget, we have approved it. It has not been approved by the state yet because of our audit and the investigation. It's not been loaded in the system yet, so even the financial reports that you have, they're not, they don't show the new budget amounts in there and the actual percentage of what's already been spent or anything like that, but he does have a line item in his budget for meters and things like that.
Just go ahead and pay your meters.
Well, no, we need to make a motion to do that.
Do probably that calibration if y'all wanna, want him to do that. We probably need to postpone that.
Yeah.
Oh, calibration.
Make your calibration.
It's a motion to adopt that. I second, I second it, but Donny, also, I'd like for you to ask them, since we've already done it this year, since we already paid to have it done for this year, ask them to hold up and start this the first of January, and then cover next year.
Yes, but we're good till then.
Okay. Ask them to start it first of January.
Okay.
Miss Brenda?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna move forward. Ready, let's go. The water department's out.
I just had some of the water department wanna talk about their salaries, just flying different people, and so I talked to Beth about it so that we could explain it publicly. Devonte was upset that he makes less than, we discussed, we discussed last year, no, not last year, before the budget, that we're gonna get a dollar raise or something.
If it was in the, if we had the money to do it.
In the new budget.
Yes, yes.
So we had to wait till past July.
Yes.
And so what are the findings of the new budget?
We went over that in July. We were sixty-seven thousand dollars over budget in salaries for the water department compartment for last fiscal year, and because of that fact, there was no money available. Nobody got raises. Like, if I can't, if I can't raise their salary, I'm not gonna raise mine. If I'm not gonna raise mine, I'm not gonna raise the police department, so there were no across-the-board raises approved for anybody.
I have a question. How, how and why did it run sixty-seven thousand over budget in water?
Well, I, I know of at least one. Somebody said to me that they got two raises last year after the budget was approved, but I know there was at least one where everybody in the water department did get a raise.
But we lost Jackie, which was a big challenge.
It's her.
His whole salary was.
Right. I mean, it just wasn't, when I did the budget, I did it with Kay, and the salary budget was based on the existing employees and their annual salary. Jackie's was never even committed to play there, but even with Jackie's salary, everybody was listed last year when that budget was done, and we still went over seventy thousand dollars, so there just was no money for anyone to get another raise until next fiscal year. No, now, we just started doing the overtime for them. That is one thing that did change, is that one of the things this investigation has come to play is that we've always been told we get comp time if we work over, and we don't get to make that decision. They do. If they work over and they want to be paid overtime, so we did put extra money in the budget for overtime for these guys. It's limited, has to be, Donny has to approve it. If they, like, if they've got something, they've got a leak or whatever, it has to be signed off and approved by Donny, and then it has to be gone to the mayor. They can't just write, I worked four hours over. It has to be a good reason. But that is one thing that we did do, is add some extra money into that budget to cover the cost of the overtime so that we are compliant with the state.
And Donny, it's my understanding, I mean, I'm just asking you this because I'm not sure. Devonte makes the same thing that he's been made for two years, and there was a new guy hired that makes more than he does or as much as he does, and there's a reason why for that, right?
Devonte, Devonte does not make the same he's made for two years. He's gotten a dollar fifty an hour in raises since last March.
Okay, since this last March?
Since March of twenty-three. Since March of twenty-three.
The, the, the new guy, he runs the equipment.
Yeah, he's an equipment operator.
He is an operator, yeah.
I just wanna make that public.
Yeah.
Because he's upset and I just, I'm, I'm trying to keep him from quitting, but if there's no money to do anything, there's no way to do anything.
He was hired in at fifteen dollars.
Yeah.
Because of the fact that they didn't, they was offered, they was offered the machine, they didn't wanna run the machine. And he was already trained, he can, he can do anything with a machine. You gotta pay him more money, he's not gonna, you can hire two.
I understand, I understand, I just wanted to be public so that nobody thinks anybody's being stupid and pushed under the hook.
Well, and, and another thing too, Renee, there's a, at present time, I think there's a lot of people out there. It's the, well, the street and water department now, and I think that's probably about as much as they've ever been out there, is that correct, Donny?
Since I've been there.
And, uh, they don't pick up garbage anymore, uh, now we got a machine that, uh, that they can pick up these lambs with, uh, the mo, most of it anyway.
Right.
So their, their, their job has been enlightened and their work has been enlightened.
Right.
And, uh.
But if they weren't here to know that, they don't know what it's been like, you know what I'm saying, they're just doing what they do.
Right, but, uh, I'd like to see them all get a, a, a good raise, but the fact is that, you know, our towns don't have the money.
I understand that.
And, and it's like you've talked about.
And I'm not even asking for a raise, I'm just asking them to explain why everybody does what they're doing.
Uh, and I'm still not understanding how in the world it run over, uh, sixty seven thousand dollars in, in salary.
We were budgeted according to what they made July the first. And then I know of at least one raise, if not two, since July the first of twenty-three, where we came in here and asked for more money, I think at one time everybody got a dollar, is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
So when you put those rates, when you, when you budget according to what they're making today and three months later you give everybody a dollar an hour raise and then they've made a dollar an hour over their initial salary for nine months' time, it just adds up. And it, it's sixty seven thousand dollars, I mean, you can't, you can't just say, oh, we're just not gonna worry about that, but we're gonna go ahead and give everybody another three percent raise, we've got a, a sum now.
I'm not even suggesting that, I just.
But that dollar that they got, I think, was in October and that was a larger, that was a much bigger raise than they would've gotten if they would've waited till July third and got the three percent raise. So basically, they got a bigger raise than they got earlier than they should have.
Have you talked to Devante about, did you know he was upset?
I have. Well, I was told he was upset and, but we talked about it, we, and I've told him, you know, what Beth's telling y'all now, I've told them that and most of them here, uh, or a couple of them here, so.
Right.
They, they understand, I guess.
Yeah, I'm self-employed and I can't just raise prices just 'cause I want to. Well, you, you have to do it within the structure of whatever it is you're working with and I, I mean, I guess I could, but I could run off with my business if I did that. I, I could, but I, I won't. And I try to be mindful of clients and, and what's going on in the whole earth in the economy before I, yes, it hurts me to be in that situation too, but it would hurt me worse if I go up and I, I can't supply to them because they can't come.
Yeah, I agree.
Another thing that I, that I have to look at as far as for a full-time employee, everybody that's on our health insurance, it's, it is, the premium is determined by age. So for some of them, their premium is four hundred and fifty dollars a month. For some of them, it's closer to seven hundred, me including, 'cause I'm one of the oldest ones on the insurance, but you have to take that into consideration because if you worked at, Ernco or some other place, you're paying a large portion of that premium yourself.
Out of your check.
So if it's seven hundred dollars a month and you're having to pay thirty-five hun, or thirty-three or fifty dollars a month, that is another forty-two hundred dollars a year that you have to consider as part of your salary you're not having to pay. In addition, we are very fortunate that the board has approved to pay our deductible all these years and that's another three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So that's almost ten thousand dollars per employee over your salary that we don't think about when we're looking at our paycheck. If I was having to pay my insurance, my check would be three hundred dollars less right now. And that is a huge blessing and it's something that I have to look, which is easy for me to look at it because I pay those bills, but I just want them to understand, like, I've got guys that are just now getting on that insurance, that's almost ten thousand dollars a year that you're gifted on your ninety days.
That's tax.
That's tax-free.
Y'all gonna be hired? Y'all gonna be hired?
That's huge, that's huge.
While, while, while we're talking about insurance, I've learned that, I think it's another small town that's been paying, uh, overpaying on insurance for us, uh, stuff like they got covered like, uh, motors and pumps and stuff at, uh, like the lagoon and places like that and then the street and water department, or especially in the water department. Uh, I, I would like for you, if you get time and when you get time, to just check into, uh, what kind of money we're paying in insurance.
Okay.
On, on like, uh, the, the stuff out at the sewers, are, are we overpaying?
Okay.
What's Samantha for a spreadsheet of everything that we're paying for?
Okay, I think we got you.
If we're overpaying, we need to know about it. Uh, I mean, but, but Donny needs to help us out in that area, he needs to know what things cost or what it will cost to replace it, you know, for his, uh.
Motors and pumps.
Motors and pumps and, and so forth like that and, and things out at the water plant.
Okay.
Uh, of course, I know that, uh, we want insurance, gotta have insurance, but, uh, we don't wanna pay no more than what we have to. We want our stuff covered, but we don't want it doubly covered.
And since we're talking about city money, um, last, last meeting, the regular meeting, we discussed, but nothing, nobody ever said anything and I don't know if they weren't supposed to say anything. But I was just looking at, when I went through the meetings, that we discussed selling, uh, some of the city property, but.
I've got the information on the truck.
Okay.
I've got, I've gotta have to make the model mileage if there's anything major wrong with it. The golf cart, he's saying, we kinda got two different opinions on the golf cart, it's really not worth a lot of money. He thinks it is, uh, able to be ran. And one thing that we talked about was seeing if they could get it running and bringing it to city hall so we can use it to go to the post office. 'Cause it's just old and it's sitting out there at the, at the water plant. Just use it to run down the post office or the bank or wherever, right there around town, or could get it running and sell it either way or keep it for a spare, but the way that it is right now, there's not gonna be enough money to even mess with selling that. The police car, Jason and I have talked about it, they've gotta get it stripped and same thing, we tried to get the mileage off of it for the state investigator and you can't even turn it over because the battery's dead. So that car's gotta be completely stripped and then I've gotta have the specs off of it. There's a website called Munisabid, I've got a guy that will help us get it placed on there, but they do charge a fee. Our best bet is to put it in the paper, put it on our Facebook page, take bids for thirty days. And then at the board meeting, next board meeting, directly after that thirty day period, you open the bids just like you do for someone that's gonna be a vendor and you take the highest bid and that's the person that is able to purchase it. And then those items would come off the insurance as well if they're on there, I'm not sure if they're still on there right now, but, but it would be the truck and the police car.
I'm pretty sure the police car would be, but they, they have used the, the pickup.
The pickup truck.
Like a few three months ago, eh?
It's drivable, but, but the rear seal is leaking in it and.
Neither one of them worth much, but it's just the fact that.
I just didn't want it to fall through the cracks and us not go there.
Yeah, yeah, just take it, uh, you know, we take it off, get it off our insurance and get it out our way.
Right now, the major holdup was being in the, in the transition period of the police chief issue because he's just coming on board and he's gonna have to get out there, like, I think he said you have to strip completely, anything, police
Right.
wires off of it before you sell it, so that's just something he's, once he gets sailed in and gets going, he'll get it stripped down and we can get him both placed for sale.
Chief, while, while we're talking about this, uh, what about our third car?
Uh, they told me tomorrow that we should be able to pick it up, they said that they call.
Should be able to pick it up tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay, spend a week or something like that.
They told me they had everything in that we should be able to pick it up Friday, is what he told me.
Ready to roll.
Just maybe.
Yeah.
I, I'll let you guys know either way.
Uh, sounds good.
Look, I guess we'll move on, Frankie Sharp, employee, all the procedures manual.
If y'all recall, last fall, and at a series of meetings, several weeks, actually several months, we met down at the civic center and, and took what we had, revamped and redone the policy and procedure for the employees. Uh, that's been compiled and we got, uh, questioned by the E O C as well as the controller's office about policy and procedure being in place. And said it wasn't a request, it was a demand, that this municipality will have a policy and procedure in place and they wanted copies. So copies were sent to them. Now, the one other thing that had to be done was that they requested and said that there would be, uh, each employee had to be given a copy, let them review it, and then there would be a sign off sheet in it for them to sign and then a copy of that put in a permanent record that they had received.
That's protection for the city.
Yes.
Exactly.
We had the chip on that long.
And that was, that was implemented last week and we had, uh, an issue because of one page that had been put in it that were officially pulled out, but other than that, uh, I mean, it, overall, I mean, it's exactly what we all sat down there and agreed to. It would be the policy and procedure for the employees.
You don't have to sign that, Beth, I just wanted y'all to see what it, how it reads.
And a copy of this to be signed, dated and put in their employee packet and in their, uh, personnel file, but a second copy in there for a signed date and leaving the book and that book is there. They, they home, they throw the covers can, they won't take it, but it's their copy that they have received.
And it doesn't say, I agree with every word in this book and I hear, it simply says, I was handed a copy of this book.
Right.
And one of the questions I've been asked is, the one that's been getting these documents ready for the investigator is, I wanna see so-and-so's employee file, where do you show me they've gotten their personnel policy? How, how do you know that they've seen it, that they've been given this? If I've got this page signed in there in personnel file, they can't say they never saw it.
That's true.
And that's all it boils down to, but we, they don't wanna sign it because they feel like they're agreeing. You don't, I, I've worked at places before, I don't have to agree with what their employee policy states. I just have to adhere to it or I don't have a job and they just want you to sign it stating that you've received it and that's all we're looking at.
Oh, you have, you have any problems with that, Donny?
Well, there're just, there's a page in there that says, on a pay scale and it's got everybody's top out pay.
That needs to be pulled out.
Yeah, I don't agree with it.
I don't think we oughta have a top out, here.
And that might not be the right word, that is.
I remember it, I remember it, but with economies and life changing and if you're not, if you're not gonna change this every so often.
You do.
Well, that's a.
You do, you do, when it comes around each year when you redo your budget and you figure a pay raise.
That page would change yearly based on the salaries in the budget.
One thing will change, we don't have to go through the whole.
No, just that salary page would be updated.
There's a.
They use the tongues up and it bumps up.
The longer.
And, and, and if you'll remember.
Yes, come in, yes.
If you'll remember, we left three, three of them were pertaining to.
I, I.
Uh.
Number one was Donny's job and, and, Donny's job, not Jackie's job, Donny's job was.
Stop and operate.
Then you had the C F, CFO, not what Beth's job, meaning the CFO, and then we had chief of police. That, all of that was discussed and we wouldn't have a top pay a bit because that would boil down to that.
Right, and this, this is.
That's how we did, that's how we did.
No, this is just what was agreed upon right now.
So, we, we didn't have a top pay for that, that's what we can't go through the individual.
You can call them now, boy, you're here.
You can call them now, you know.
Yeah, you're, that's all you're.
I was going for.
Well, most, most jobs do have top and pay.
But remember, am I right or wrong?
In many, they don't get rate.
City of Tippville, I have, I know, I talked to, uh, J, uh, Jolie Williams at the Wayne Saturday morning, they told me that an employee at Tippville did not even go to work out there on, anywhere without signing the book.
Here's kind of what, here's kind of what.
I understand that, a little bit of rubber, but you didn't, you didn't, you didn't go out, if you, they carried you in, they, and what I was gonna make a recommendation on is that, but before that, what I was gonna, at Toppinville, you went through an orientation, four hours. They give you the, if you filled out the appropriate paperwork and they showed you that book, they give you twenty minutes to review it. You signed that, turned your back in, you went to work, if you did not sign that book, you went to the front door, they assured you out. Uh, without signing that book, you did not go to work.
Here's kind of what we're looking at and, and to me, I think it would've been helpful when I started if it was done this way. But having a little onboarding with each person, like when Nick was hired in, Nick, be at city hall Monday morning at nine o'clock to meet with Beth. Go through the employee manual so that they understand the vacation policy, the leave policy, all of the rules. Send them down to get their drug test done, give them this, have their I-nines done, their W-fours done. Everything they need, this has never been done and this needs to be done. Everything they need, get their personnel file assembled and then send them to work. And they don't go to work until that stuff is done, so they wouldn't go to Donny at seven in the morning, they would come to Beth at nine and go to Donny when I was through with him.
Sounds good. Sounds good in the future, uh, Mayor, uh, uh.
I think Michael's got my question on that.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Darrell.
Uh, Darrell was, I asked a question.
Question I'm glad is this, on the same note with the pay scale, we've got a gentleman, he's been here nine days, we talked about why he go, he's a machine operator. Okay, I've been in this company going on eleven years, not consecutive, I lived for a few months, but I come back. The knowledge is still there, the training is still there. Why is this young man, according to that sheet, pay scale sheet, the top pay is higher than what my, and my pay is, and I run the same equipment he does before he got hired in? Me also being an equipment operator, why he got a higher pay scale than I do? And me being here ten years, how, I wonder if somebody explained that to me?
You can't run that machine like he does, you can't.
So I'm not.
We know that.
I'm not, I'm not as good an operator as he is.
No, I'm, I'm saying, that little excavator, it takes expertise, that's done, it takes expertise and, and, you know, we, we had to, it built a lot of stuff and he's worked and done this long time. And in any job you have, if you're an equipment operator and you're already been doing this, hey, you gotta give him more money. Now, I know who's training.
So my, so my, so my seventeen years construction before I come to the city running that, it had nothing to do with it, I'm guessing.
I don't know about that, I'm just saying that's more of a part. At the time, I think he was running, so nobody wanted to run the team.
No, if I'm not an operator, I, I, I'm not a guy to have to operate.
He's out. He was at fourteen in March last year, got the fifty cent raise in July, he got a dollar, I think it was in October of last year, it was September, October when the, they got the dollar raises. Joe was here and now his ninety days will be up September fourteenth, so he will go to that. And then that would be his top. Now, this would change in July with the new budget, whatever raises were agreed upon at that time, all of these would be updated.
Would Darrell look like in last year and a half, you got a dollar and a half, a dollar and a half?
Oh, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning that, I'm, I'm just talking about the old, old operator say, that's what I'm talking about.
Well.
I, I was, I was good enough operator to run in the equipment before he was hired, but now I'm not as good a job as he. That's what I'm.
It's, it, there's a difference in, there's a difference in, I have to trust him to go out and fix leaks and do stuff without me there and I don't feel comfortable sending you out to dig around gas lines and mains. And I, I've seen you run the equipment, uh, you don't show that you've got twenty-something years of experience in it.
Good enough.
I mean, you're slow, I mean, you're, it's, it's all in your work ethic, work, work ethic, you know what I mean? It's all in, I, this boy works hard, he comes in, works hard every day, they, that, I, I'm on.
He's already trained.
Yeah, yeah.
To work around gas lines.
I don't have to, I don't have to say do this or do that, if he say something and he done, he does it.
The employees out there.
It's a difference there.
They kinda have trouble, I don't know, taking the initiative, going on, do stuff that needs to be done without being told to.
But also, uh, to say, you know, this boy, I, I worked years ago, telephone company and dug around and you gotta have expertise.
I, I.
You know that, you can run there.
I can, I understand it.
Can I see his point, but he can't run that machine.
I do, I understand it.
You hit the little expire rock to the lines or a gas line.
It's on, wow.
It's dangerous.
I have a question.
Yes, I just had a question on the, um, sign off for the, uh, policy and procedure. Does it state on there that this is not a contractual agreement?
No, it simply states.
No, it's not.
It needs to say.
By signing below, I certify I have received an updated copy of the personnel policy, so that's all they're signing.
It needs to state that this is not a contractual agreement.
It's, it's not a contractual agreement, okay?
All they're doing is signing for what they've acknowledged they received.
Right, but it still needs to state that this is not.
That way they know that it's not a contractual agreement.
So do you think y'all will sign these now? I'd like to put this to bed.
They've one issue, was all I had.
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
First thing.
We, uh, Frankie, the library board appointment, we got a library board?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That one for thirty years, for that.
First of them, first of them.
Well, we just pointed somebody to it here about six months ago.
Because that was.
I just say, I love it.
Okay, is, uh, is, what, did she take you there, please?
No.
Kristy, no?
No.
That's a different, that was a different vacancy. We've got a vacancy again and Christie has left the job. But the board has asked, and that's not us, that's just the way they normally do it, it's a formal request from the library board that Christie. Uh, since she's leaving the position as librarian, but they would like to retain her as a member of the board.
And she willing to do it? She is.
Yes, I made a motion that we approve her from board.
Christie was a good librarian.
Yes.
You second it, right?
Roll.
Same thing?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Renee?
Who, who else was over?
Um. Barbara, it, it lives in Tiptonville, Methodist preacher's wife is on it. Uh, Monica Schell is, uh, Susan, Susan Patterson is the president. And then Amos something and I don't remember, and, and I can't remember what the other one's name is.
Uh, the school board superintendent's on it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, what we got, I talked to them at the, at the board in Tiptonville. And the incinerator proposing, Tiptonville's paying twenty-one thousand dollars a year. And I talked to them and they said they would let us do it for sixteen thousand. And there's only two hundred and fifty more people in Tiptonville than there is in Ridgeley. So first they wanted this way to say, well, a household, and I said, no, we can't afford this, we, we, we can't pay for Tiptonville. That was gonna run about nineteen thousand. And I talked to Danny and them and, and the board up there and they said, uh, that we could use it for sixteen thousand a year.
Well, Mayor, we don't have near the territory that they have in Tiptonville. And we don't have near the trees they have in Tiptonville, so we shouldn't, we shouldn't be having to pay that much rent.
Well, I, that's not me, that's the, the, the board. But they said, no, we can't come back if we don't pay this. I mean, that's, we got options.
And I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm, I'm gonna stand on record again. People in this city limits pay county taxes just like they do city taxes and people in the county pay county taxes only. That's the incinerator we put in up there for the people inside this county. It didn't specify city Tiptonville, didn't specify city Ridgeley. You got people, you got people in this town won't care something up there and all we're doing is transporting their stuff up there for them, they gonna tell us that we can't do it? I, 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 I disagree with that, that, that is a problem.
Well, I'm saying, but I mean, that's, that's a whole.
That it's, it's double taxation anyway, can look at it.
Yes, he has a point.
It's double taxation anyway.
We're paying city and county taxes, county people just pay county tax at the same rate. And they get to use it, but we have to pay extra to use it.
No, they're paying twenty-one thousand dollars too.
No, like the county residents do, they, they just pay their county taxes.
They pay their county taxes, that's all they pay.
And that's it. They don't have to pay you the same.
They, they do just what, the county people do just what we do though, we can take it individually, but the city can't take it.
But all we're doing is transporting your situation.
I agree with you a hundred percent, but that's the way that, that, it works. I mean, we can, I can go to my yard and pick up, take it up there, it won't cost me a dime, but I kinda have the city come do it.
If you hire somebody, you cut, say, I get a tree cut out. Okay, they charge you to haul it off. But then you take it up there, they bring a tree up there, a tree company, they're gonna have to pay. They gonna meet them, we're coming up there and we're dumping this off, uh, we done in city Ridgeley, that, that's over, that's over.
Well, let me ask you something, but, but the, the, the thing don't change as, um, you still can't take certain things up there, right?
No, you can't take furniture.
Only thing you check up there is limbs.
That's right, yeah, that's all ain't burning up there. It's wood material.
Well, actually, the budget already been approved.
There's nowhere to take the money for us to do it. That, that was one thing with solid waste, when we did the budget, we, we started with the first draft of the budget, solid waste was in the red. And I went through and there was, I, I told y'all before meeting last month, or the more, the meeting where we approved the, the budget. There was a line item in there where y'all were paying the inmates when y'all were picking up trash for their food. And I took that out to put us in the black, so solid waste is like within five hundred dollars of breaking even, there is no sixteen thousand dollars there to do anything.
That's thirteen hundred and something dollars a month.
But for the year.
No, sixteen thousand for the year.
Right, but for the year, our budget is only three hundred and something dollars to the good, we don't have the, the extra money.
Thirteen hundred, thirty or forty dollars a month.
Yeah, we just, we didn't budget that, so we just, we didn't do it this year.
But there again, it is something that we.
We need.
When I think about it, we've got people that don't have a way to carry their waste up there. I mean, I have a truck, but I have access to it, and a lot of people don't.
So if, if I cut down a tree in my yard, I can put it in my trailer and take it up there.
That's right, yeah.
But if I have you guys come pick it up.
They can't take it.
Then they can't do it. Okay, I just wonder.
Well, we implemented this, we done this.
The, the difference between.
If you cut one down, you don't, you sell, no problem, or you hire a tree down. The idea was that tree company is gonna, they need to haul it off.
But, uh, if we do, we're doing it this.
If you have it cut and we have to haul it off, which are, we started out at seventy-five dollars a truckload. And I think we run, we voted to be, sometime back in the past year to a hundred and fifty.
I think it was a hundred and fifty.
But how much have we collected?
No, if, if, if they, if they cut a tree down and had it, and piled it up out there for us to haul off. We were supposed to be getting a hundred and fifty dollars a load.
But we've never.
We haven't had to, we haven't had to haul all, all the trees.
We've not hauled it through.
Since we implemented that, most of them are having their own trees hauled up.
Yeah. If it's storm damage, if it's storm damage, always, we did that. There's a lot of storm damage here. We picked up a bunch.
But you can't, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do it, but I, I talked to them and that's, that's the way it is, I mean.
They're saying they won't need to take storm damage, uh.
Uh, well, we may can negotiate a little of that, but they said it's too much coming up there that, that they just can't do it. I mean, all of it's not storm damage, you know, if it's storm damage, and I guess if we, uh, send them a notice after the storm and we got stuff to haul, we'd probably do it. When that's over, it's over, they told me for sure, this ain't gonna go, go, it's not gonna fly.
Have y'all not, I think I'm hauling quite a bit out here.
Yeah, we do, we haul quite a bit and burn it ourselves.
Right, that's right. But eventually, they're gonna stop just out here.
I've always argued, uh, Don, for a, a wood chipper, to use a wood chipper on these limbs that you pick up week after week. The moment there's not much left when you run into a wood chipper.
Then I can say a malt.
Yeah, there you go.
But anyway.
What you paying for that, yeah?
I go to the board, it's weather, it's the same amount of people, some of them boards, it's the same amount of people, then about two hundred and fifty people. In Ridgeley, it is, in Tiptonville, we said, y'all should do this break. And I said, yeah, but y'all got a lot of, a lot of big area, you got a lot of things up here, we don't have. I said, y'all haul a lot more stuff than we are, and so, and I, I told them, I said, you know, we just, we can't do that. And finally, we, we also, we didn't pay sixteen thousand, I said, I don't know, I'll ask, I took y'all.
Well, everything they get, Don, they carry, but, uh, we, we took a lot of ours out here with the fact I was out here ever since you been there.
But it's coming, you're not gonna be able to do that. That's gonna be.
Oh, yeah, well.
Who's, um, who will stop?
The, uh, the, uh, state will stop it, people, environmental.
Well, you can, you can burn, as long as you get, as long as you contact them, but you can burn wood.
Yeah, but what, but. We done been into it with the.
Yeah, well, by the time.
Burning big piles, you know?
Yeah.
And it was, come down, one time they wanted to completely stop it.
It's the state's awful.
But, you know, will, they find any kind of trash.
No, I'm talking about if you're just carrying limbs up there.
Oh, you're talking about there?
Yeah, if you're just carrying limbs up there. There's a state, the state manual standing there for a gate watch for a lot of trucking. And.
No, he's gonna come down there, we know pile gets picked up, they keep tabs on it, I'm telling you. And I'm telling you, they, uh, they almost stopped it, burning, hoping they burned it. I better been there, know that, that commission up there knows this, we're just barely got a place at the incinerator right now. Cause it's out of compliance, incinerator don't work, it's gonna cost fifty or sixty thousand. They had money when I was up there, forty-four thousand dollars to fix it and the money just kinda, we don't know where it is, it's lit.
All the guys got rest. Yeah, I understand, uh, I can operate it, bro. Only thing bothering me about it is, it's a little found, just squeezing that money.
Yeah, we can, we can do it right now.
I, I mean, I know we can't, but I mean, I'm just telling you that eventually they'll have to be out because, uh, the environmental people, they don't care.
Right.
They don't care.
We just have to tell them, well, we'll have to look at it next year.
Yeah, yeah.
See if we come up with some more money.
Motion table.
Check.
Roll call.
Renee?
Yes.
Dennis? Nancy?
Yes.
Yeah, I hear most of the.
Wait a minute, Mayor, we gotta, I know it's not on the agenda, but, uh, Renee, if we, we have got to start, uh. Considering a, an appearance on that.
Okay.
I don't even have any kind of names or nothing about it.
So we can get Johnson out of, out of the down there. Brad said he'd be a good, good.
We are, we are gonna have to consider the fact that we're gonna have to have one.
Yep.
I don't think it's, uh, I don't think we need one, two, we need, we gotta have, we need somebody that's, that's lined up that. If we consider this.
Get on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda for September?
Yes, I'll say something right quick.
Yes.
Just wanna acknowledge in public, uh, help that the Lake County Sheriff's Office and the Tiptonville Police Department have been giving us, uh. They went above and beyond, uh, I wanna thank them publicly for doing that and, uh, I'd like to have some help with the board of maybe getting, uh. Civic Center and maybe getting those two agencies down here and we get together and, and eat and fellowship, have a good time in the future.
Tell us when.
All right, we can do that.
Sounds good. Now, you, are, are you asking for the city to furnish something or just?
No, I just need a place to do it.
Okay, well.
They even throw rocks down.
You're weapon to, you better.
That makes a good.
Thank you.
We will, I, I'll say that the ladies have. I can't cook, Grace.
We have a, we have a fundraiser coming up for Pat Haven's, on that note with the civic center. Do y'all have an issue with donating the civic center to Pat Haven September the nineteenth to use for a bingo night?
The first week, bring it up, what do you like?
Okay, we're gonna do bingo, we cannot bingo for money. Um, I've already gotten three, Ms. Renee was my first person that said she would donate something and then I've gotten two other people that are gonna donate things. We're gonna get door prizes to give out for those that win bingo because we can't do money unless she's already registered as a five oh one C, which she's not. But we can play bingo and give away prizes and we're just gonna do refreshments.
Do you charge for them?
It'd be like fifteen dollars to get in the door, come in and play fifteen rounds of bingo. Whoever wins each round wins a prize and then we're gonna have cookies and drinks and stuff like that. Kinda like a girls' night.
Bring the dance tag though?
I don't know, voice it down.
So they're pretty funny.
Next most.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Who made the motion to a dance? We're gonna do.
I just wanna say one thing, I appreciate y'all letting me interview for jobs. You got a good man, I'm not gonna leave him, because if you hear rumors that I'm going, I'm not going anywhere, I'm gonna stay and help Jason make this, this. A better.